Okay, I'm gonna start recording.
Okay, sorry, okay. Go ahead, start recording. I will call this meeting to order. We'll call place.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Groshah. Vice President Duncan.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have form.
Okay, I need to read something here. Before we start. Okay, this is from Director Groshah. And this was about the meeting absence for 3/11/2020. Out of concern of my fellow board members, district staff, and ratepayers, and have an abundance of caution, I have determined that I will follow the federal, state, and county Department of Health recommendations on social distancing to best protect everyone's health from the spread of the coronavirus. I will not be in attendance at today's board meeting. It is my sincere hope that MSWD will quickly find a way to accommodate this Health Department mandate so that we can safely conduct board business in a safe and approved method while not jeopardizing the health of fellow board members, district staff, or ratepayers. Thank you, Steve Groshah, Director of Mission Springs Water District. Okay, what I talked to Pinky and what I need to do now is ask the board if they are okay with giving him an excused absence for today's meeting? Do you have any problems with that? They didn't say I need to take a vote, so I'm not sure I need to take a vote. But seeing so, due to this email, the board would grant the approval of Steve Groshah to be excused from this meeting. Okay, so, public input.
We don't have it on the agenda, so tomorrow, we can't do that. We would need to post his address, where he's taking the meeting from, and we didn't do that a handful of times.
Well, we can do it for the Monday meeting.
We can.
I want to throw that out there just in case.
Thank you, and that's why I kept this other email which he sent out asking that same question, but the address he gave does not have a specific location as far as in the RV park goes. I'm assuming this is the RV park. It just has the address of the whole park.
So, we would need his specific.
We would need, yes. We would need a space number just so people could find it if they wish to go there and listen to the meeting. Pardon?
97.
It's number 97. But it has a street, I was told that that part, that each one has a number, but it also has a street name of where that trailer or whatever is on that street. It's not on Indian Canyon. So, I don't know. So, we'd have to talk about that and see if that's something we can do, add on to maybe Monday's meeting.
It would be interesting to see the guidelines that the county health is putting out. They're talking, what I've seen put out by the county Health Department and the quarantine and that type of stuff, they're talking about large gatherings of people that dropped them all over the world, and that's been the target of the county. I did not see anything from the county or anywhere that said that meetings.
Small meetings, no?
Small meetings should be.
Not yet?
Yeah.
I think they're waiting for the testing to come out and see what's going on out there, but the Senior Inspiration Luncheon has been postponed. Anybody didn't get that message. Okay. Number four, I did number four. Resolution 2020 to 06 Employee Manual Rules and Regulations Update. I will turn this over to the General Manager.
All right, thank you, Director Wright. First of all, I want to apologize. I know you've instructed me to bring to you this manual in bits and pieces, but when you did that, we were about halfway through it, Bee writing it, and we had this manual, you know, sort of done, so we, if you don't want to do the resolution today, we can do it another time. It isn't, you know, mandatory. But we did, in order to bring you up to date, give it to you, and we sent it out to you. It's essentially not changed much. We did, I think there's one thing, when we get to that, you could be on the vacation basically, we changed that and cut it back. But that's about, most of the changes are not that major. Orianna's gonna go through this and let you know what changes were made. We gave you a copy of what those were, I think the red line, two, correct?
Yes, that was the red line, Jerry.
And one thing I want, the reason that I already had this begun by the time we got those discussions was that I wanted to cut this down as much as we could, and we did that substantially. And we also will take another shot at this when we go through the codex. So, you will have another chance in a very short order to take another look at this. If there's something that you want to go to more than discuss.
For the record, would you introduce our person?
Oh, Lisa Tao is our attorney, the one that handles, and has been for, what, now, three years?
Three years.
Our HR legal issues, along with Orianna, and it has been a delight working with Bee because she doesn't charge us that much, and I don't want to bring the price up. It really is an efficient way to do it. Orianna handles the work, and then if we ever do need something major like this, Bee then does that work, and we can be efficient as to how we, you know, solicit this kind of work. And then again, like I always do, I like to have the private sector do as much of the work for us as we possibly can. There is one more thing. I don't need to, sorry, I noticed at the beginning of this meeting, we started, of course, talking about the coronavirus. Victoria is gonna, in her presentation tomorrow, have much more detail on our status of our response to the coronavirus, okay?
Does that include in-house response, or are we just talking about the general?
Staff procedures? That probably the former.
Well, yeah.
In terms of external messaging and things of that nature, what page?
We'll discuss it and bring to you, yeah.
And tell us what you've got going on around here for the employees, what you're telling them, okay?
Yes, I mean, we basically are being very, you know, flexible with employees that are not feeling good. We tell them to stay home or work remotely as much as we can, but we can't stop the business of the day, you know, if people want that type of delivery water. And the other thing with this is that, you know, this isn't a waterborne disease, we need to be very clear with the outside that this indeed is not a problem when the water prepacks.
And we are gonna be looking at underwater agencies, and kind of looking at how they're releasing it or what information that they're providing in terms of resources.
And internally, we've worked with JPIA. They have a brochure that gives the staff some information. We're gonna pass that out. I don't know if we've done that yet, but.
We haven't yet.
But we intend to.
We need to.
Yeah, we need to, we need to make sure that happens around, so, thank you. With that said, I'm done with Orianna. Proceed.
All right. So, in your packet, you have two versions of the employee handbook. This without the cover is the one that was emailed to you on January 8th. Throughout it, you'll see some blue edits. Those are the edits that have been made since you received this, and I will go through them.
My left hand.
You have a copy right there, just in case. And then this one is the final draft that we'll go over point by point. I have also passed around just some highlights on some of the, on the rules, on all of the rules. If there is a particular rule that you want to explore more in depth, please let me know, and we can go a little bit more into it. Otherwise, I'll just go through some of the highlights as to what the changes were or what the rule is all about. Okay? And then Bee and I are going to take turns, just going back and forth, and please feel free to ask any questions as we go along. Just a brief history on the handbook. The first one that we had was created in 1995. Ever since then, there have been some updates, mostly '95, '96, '97, '99, 2000. The last update to the employee handbook was done in 2009. So, for a decade, there has not been any complete update. There have been amendments to it that we keep on adding towards the end, and those amendments have been incorporated into the new handbook. That way, we don't have any attachments in any other sections. So, some of the major changes that we made in general had to do with legal requirements. The law has changed since 2009, and those changes have been incorporated. That goes for horizon policies, FMLA, CFRA, all kinds of these. Also, technology has changed. We have incorporated the use of technology. We have added flexibility to this SCLE process, and we have also updated some of the performance evaluation benefits, all to give the district more flexibility in how we conduct business with the employees. So, with that being said, Bee is going to go over the policies that were completely removed from the 2009 version.
Yes, and I'd just like to add to what Orianna said earlier. Because the handbook had not really been updated for almost a decade, and what we found when we read it was, when it was updated, it generally was, let's just add, we crossed some bridge that caused us to think we now need a policy to address this, so we were just adding policies as attachments to the end. Sometimes the policies were inconsistent with the rest of the handbook. Sometimes the policies are just now obsolete because, for example, we no longer have concerns with age or age-related issues. So, we really just did an entire overhaul, and when I look at our notes, we started, Orianna and I, in January of 2018, and then we had numerous meetings with Matt and Danny so that they could give us their input on how these policies, when practically applied, what they have to deal with as consequences. So, we took all that into consideration. So, I told Orianna, I feel like I've given a birth almost.
It's been a labor loss for two years.
So, and as Orianna mentioned, our main goal was, A, to simplify the handbook. Zarden said it was very long, it was very cumbersome, and many, many of the policies just really did not favor the district. They were very employee-friendly. And not that we don't want to be employee-friendly, but we also want to take into consideration when employees want this or that or the other, we still have to operate the entire district. So, we started to streamline our process somewhat. We started with some notes that Orianna had gotten from JPIA when they reviewed the handbook some years ago. And we went through, so that we didn't reinvent the wheel, we went through and identified what we thought was JPIA's biggest criticism of our handbook, and that was, as we imagine, that many of the policies were superfluous, not necessary, or were redundant. So, we took all of those out. And when I say take out, we deleted them, but if the provisions in them were important, we incorporated them into other rules. So, rule number two. Two was initially several pages of definitions. We took that out completely. That's not necessary, a return need to be defined, we just defined it in the rule that it shows up. Rule number five had to do with personnel records. We believe that as well, it's understood practically and legally that the employer maintains personnel records, that employees have a right to view their personnel records, so we feel that wasn't necessary to spell that out. Outside employment was also deleted because many of those requirements were already in our Code of Ethics, and it was just a reiteration of both common sense and the law. You know, if an employee wants to get another job, that's fine, just don't let your other job conflict with what you're doing for us. And if it does, then you need to come talk to us about it, and you need to get the General Manager's approval to work your other job. So, we incorporated that into other rules. We also deleted the rules on classification, recruitment, examination, 13, 14, and 15. Those rules had to do with when you're initially recruiting for a position. They literally spelled out every step, where we place the ad, who we talk to, when the person calls in, to whom they should speak, what kind of, you know, it was just cumbersome. So, we took all of that out.
And it changes probably too.
Pardon?
It changes more rapidly.
It changes, exactly, it changes all the time. And so, it was, I think, archaic to have to spell out every step. By the way, we're all adults, we're all professionals, we know these rules. Medical examination, just the same, you know, we don't have to spell out for employees exactly what's gonna happen in the medical exam. They need to take a medical exam in order to work here. Same with the employment list, there's no need to spell out how we come up with that list, who goes on that list for what reason. Now, we, the next section, Rule 21, separation from district unemployment, again, it was unnecessary, and many of the items that are addressed in that rule are later addressed under our disciplinary policies. You know, how is employees separated, under what circumstances, what are employees' rights, when we decide that we need to terminate somebody? All of that's addressed in other rules, so we took separation from district employment out. There was a rule that was specifically dedicated to pregnancy disability leave. That's great, except that it was floating out on its own, I think even as an attachment. So, what we did was we deleted the existing rule, and we just incorporated a pregnancy leave provision into our leave section, which makes more sense to employees anyway. They want to take a leave, they should be able to go to the leave section and see all the leaves that are available, and which ones they can avail themselves of, rather than have to search through the handbook for different types of leaves. Same with other leaves, we took it out as its own rule, just incorporated it into the one rule for leaves. Grievance procedure previously was extremely, extremely cumbersome, and we get why that was. The district was very careful to make sure that we followed the SCLE procedures point by point. However, the rule got to the point where it became so cumbersome, it imposed so many restrictions on the district's ability to be able to address employees' grievance, that we thought this rule really doesn't work either for the district or for the employees. To give you an example, if we wanted to terminate an employee, we had an employee who tested positive for marijuana twice. You know, first time, we gave him a pass, told him to go to rehab, get his act together. Second time, we should have been able to just fire him. He's got notice that this behavior is unacceptable. He drives a vehicle for us, for heaven's sakes. We can't have you popping for marijuana again. So, when he popped the second time, we should have just been able to say, you're done. But with the way our rules were written, we had to give him five days' notice, and 10 days' notice, and then schedule it within 15 days, and then make sure he got this, and then make sure he got that, when really, all we should have done, been able to do, was quote him and say, you're fired, you know this behavior is wrong, here are your appeal rights. If you want to appeal, this is what you do, rather than have to jump through the hoops to get there. Rule 46, we deleted again, and we discussed this earlier, it had to do with age and age-related conditions in the workplace, which in today's workplace is really applicable. Rule 48, we had a whole rule on bulletin boards, you know, where's the bulletin board, what people want it, who qualifies to hang things up for the bulletin board, we think that was necessary. Same with Rule 49. Now, this one, we believe we needed to know, however, we didn't think the handbook was the right place to put it, and it just tells employees what our rights are as managers, what we get to do to you, and you don't get to complain about it.
That's with no job description, right?
Right, right.
Well, and I think in general, we're at to the end here, say, you're hearing here that, hey, look, the state and federal rules are really restrictive, and in some cases, all our rules were literally inconsistent with what they were doing. And in order to keep us efficient, you know, we don't need to have these additional restrictions. We just need to be sure that we follow all the rules and regulations in the law.
We just need to be sure that we're compliant with the law, but it seemed like our rule added on all sorts of different restrictions that hampered management's ability. I remember, you know, every time Danny or Matt wanted to discipline somebody, it would literally require a two-day meeting, because we knew what the law said, but we had to sit down and make sure we followed the rules step by step by step, because the employees have the handbook, they know the steps, these are the steps. So, we did away with all that. And with that said, I'll have Orianna discuss the general provisions with you, and what changes were made to the general provisions.
So, from the email version that was sent to you on the aid, we had minor changes, and if you really want to see what they were, they will be on this version. Rule 12, promotion was changed. Previously, it was called changes in employment status, promotion, transfers of emotions, reclassification. The rule itself is only addressing promotion, so it was changed. Rule 11, probation, there was a small correction made. The rule read that employees on probation did not have any benefit, and that is untrue, they do, so we just corrected that. Rule 21, it was previously Rule 35, the vehicle policy and procedure, it was towards the bottom of the employee handbook, we moved it up to be right behind the vehicle policy.
Got the question back on the rule, introductory period, is that six months or a year?
A year.
Okay.
Rule 23, district pay holidays. We used to have a rule that stated that attendance the day prior or after a holiday was necessary in order for the employee to get paid for the holiday, but sometimes people get sick, it still happens to fall right after or right before a holiday, so it is not fair to the employee. We are also, we're also aware that some employees may abuse that and extend their holiday vacation, but we put our responsibility on management to monitor for trends.
Supervision, yes.
If that is the case, and the supervisor, as opposed to, if you happen to get sick and it still happens to be after a holiday, you don't get paid, because that is also unfair to the people that are truly, genuinely sick. So, we are monitoring for that.
In the construction role, they call it the Monday morning flu.
The blue flu went by now.
Hey, hey, hey.
How did it fit, like, the same?
Sick the effective day, oh, so we have an effective date for tier two, and we'll go through that. Currently, when, after 15 years, when employees bleed, they are able to cash out 100% of their sick leave. We have incorporated a second tier. We just need to have an effective date for that second tier to be effective, whether it's starting July 1st, whether it's tomorrow, it is something that we'll have to get direction on.
Well, this, yeah, the board will decide that, but.
Yes.
What is the new rule?
Well, you got, yeah.
Are you coming back to that later on?
We're coming back to that, yes.
Yes, and then we need an effective date. But anyways, that is highlighted because the version that you have said July 1st, 2019. Well, that has passed, we just need to update that. Rule 27, the family care leave title.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Will you come back? The tier two, is this where they get, the new employees have a different?
Right.
You need to explain that, I don't think they understand.
Yeah, I thought we were coming back to that rule, that's what I was asking.
We are?
Yeah, not just the date, the rule itself, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, we will address the rule, but if you want to, I can address it right now.
No, come back to it.
Okay.
We can come back to it. Oh, okay, I thought you were gonna come back to it right now, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, I should have been more clear. Rule 27, family care leave, the title was changed to incorporate all of the leaves, like Bee mentioned. Now, when the employee wants to look at any kind of leave, whether it's bereavement leave, voting time off, duty-duty, or FMLA, there is only one section for leave. So, that was condensed and combined. And then, between June 8th and now, we added our entirely new policy that was required by the DOT, the Department of Transportation, drug and alcohol policy that applies exclusively to our commercial drivers.
Okay, yeah. When marijuana became legal in California, JPIA came out with a drug policy.
Yes.
Do these two parallel each other? Are they conflicting?
No, they don't conflict. They, they did an excellent job in making sure that they fed off each other, even though the DOT strictly regulates and sees marijuana as an actual drug.
It still is federally.
Right, federally. The California, though, not so much, but we still, as a district, we do not want employees to come to work impaired, and that is addressed on the 2018 DOT, not, the 2018 Drug and Alcohol Rule.
We're subject to the federal requirement.
And painkillers or whatever, that kind of stuff is probably included in that.
It is, it is. And that's why the federal OSHA now requires employers who are subject, who have employees who are subject to DOT testing, have a whole separate rule that just addresses the DOT requirement, so that they understand, regardless of what your state rules are, you're subject to this, and it's more stringent, and it spells out all the painkillers, so they can't go out.
And then, you know, and then basically, how it does is it's sort of a domino effect, and then if they can't be allowed from the DOT restrictions, then that violates our rule that they can't drive a vehicle, which is one of the requirements of this. So, you can see how this relates. We don't need to go into detail, because that might be inconsistent with some of the detail that the federal and state rules are dictating.
All right, so those were the.
Safety-sensitive positions that we.
Yeah.
Those were the changes since the last entire handbook that you received. Now, I'd like to go over the final draft for the employee handbook.
I'm so sick.
Might have two.
I have two. Oh, that's why you said I had the other one. I got it, okay. I have a printed-out one you need. Well, I didn't know I had it under here, I hadn't looked, but.
So, we're going to.
We're going to this.
Right.
I'm expecting to memorize this.
Reading it is enough.
And I can mention, I go through the rules. If there is questions or you want to read exactly how they will read, just let me know, and we'll generate. So, Rule 1 is the general provisions rule. It was simplified. Bee did a great job at eliminating a lot of unnecessary sections, but policies against discrimination and the district's commitment to fair and equal employment opportunity remain, they were updated, but they still are part of that rule. Rule number two, the Code of Ethics.
Just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't want to get confused later on, inserting the word rule, when we're talking about sections, section two, right?
No, the rule is actually called Rule 1.
In section one.
In section one.
In section one, so we're, okay, okay. Go ahead.
Section one, Rule 2, Code of Ethics, the rule was simplified. It made the conflict of interest policy a bit more clear, and this policy spells out what we expect from employees, their behavior, not taking, you know, gifts or in exchange for jobs or, anyway, it addresses solicitation of political funds too. Rule number three, security, it was simplified. Outside request for employment information was deleted. That section basically said that if anybody is inquiring about employment, verification of employment, just directly to HR, which is current practice.
And then, HR will know a lot about those as far as that component, information.
Yes, sir. Rule number four, district property, no changes. Basically, everything we provide the employees with, cell phones, keys, tools, they are property of the district, and we expect them to take care of it. Rule number five, the use of electronic media, the district right to access, and no expectation of privacy. Bee updated that policy to be more in compliance with current rules and regulations, and the policy addresses the expected use of technology, which basically is for business purposes only, and addresses things such as improper use, remote access, and email guidelines. Basically, when the employees are using email or any of their computers or cell phones, they have no right to privacy. We have access to that information at any time for any reason. Rule number six, relationship of employees of the district, nepotism. There was no changes in that rule. The district does not discriminate against family members. They are able to apply for jobs, however, they may not report to each other, share the same duties, or have the same immediate supervisor. Also, district officials, immediate family, including the manager, may not be employed by the district, and that was a 2009 rule. Rule seven, workplace safety, no changes either. This rule states that the district will be in compliance with CAR, OSHA, and all other required laws, and it also addresses workers' compensation. Rule eight, no smoking policy, also, there was no change to that rule. The rule outlines that smoking is prohibited within the building in district vehicles, and also where minors are present, especially in district vehicles.
Question about the general manager contract employee, does this all count for any contracted employees also? I mean, do you have to live under these rules also, I guess, one life then?
If we refer to it in the contract, then I, they would have.
It doesn't matter if you are an employee by virtue of a contract or by virtue of being an at-will. being an at-will employee, it, these cover. You're still an employee, and you're covered. And now, with the recent amendments of the discrimination laws to expand so that it includes unpaid interns, contractors, independent contractors to come to our door, so it's understood that these rules apply to our employees and anybody performing work on our premises.
So when, when we have somebody come in doing a, doing contract work for us, we're going to supply them with this, right?
If, if, if they're going to be here for any length of time in which they're going to be exposed to our other employees, then yes, they should probably have it. But, you know, most contractors, for example, if they just come in to do a day or two of work, and they leave, then we're not concerned with that. Because they are technically employed by somebody else, and they have to abide by those rules. But if they're going to be here for any length of time, and they're going to be interacting with our employees, then they should understand that these rules apply, and they should be given a copy.
Okay, one other thing, the board. I know the board, we have our own book, we've already approved that. But is any of these things, if they pertain to the board, are they in our, in our, I don't?
If they pertain to, this is strictly for employees.
Got it.
Right, so whatever pertains to the board has already been addressed in the board's name.
So I thought, just wanted to make sure.
Daniel Sargent?
I did clarification, I wanted to make sure. Are we talking about staff augmentation? If we were to, I mean, for example, a district engineer that was under contract, or, because we have a number of contracts that last nine months to even longer than that type of work, under contract, under construction work, and they may have a lot of interaction because they attend meetings and talk to things.
Right.
I just want to make sure we clarified issues because of who we should be handing this to.
So that gets into a tricky area of the law, right? We, we want to make sure they maintain their independent status, and we do that by not subjecting that to our rules and policies. However, there are certain rules and policies that the law recognizes as just applicable to everybody, and it doesn't, it doesn't compromise the status, like the non-discrimination, non-harassment, code of ethics, those types of things.
Smoking rule.
Smoking, exactly.
So could that, could that be pulled out as a separate?
As a cigar lounge.
As a separate, you know, so they don't have to handle this whole thing.
And that's what we currently do. When we have staff employees that are going to be working side by side, we do provide them, we have them sign that they receive a copy of the anti-harassment, anti...
The ones that pertain to them.
The ones that are relevant to their position. They don't need to know what the vacation schedule is, or what the district policies are, those little things. But the ones that are mandated by the law, don't harass, by anti-violence policy, those we do. And also, if we, if they're going to be here long enough, we will put them through the whole anti-harassment training, probation training classes.
Mike, our IT guys. We have two guys that are contracted, they're in the building, a couple days a week, have been for years.
Correct. That's a good question, I see why they would not have gone through that. All right. And last one in that section is rule number nine, dress and grooming standards. This rule was updated. We now have the front office who wears uniform polo shirts, so we incorporated that into this rule. It also includes how many items, how many pieces of uniform the field gets and the off-front office gets. So that was updated. That is it for the first section. If you have any questions, please, I'd like to take the second section.
So section two was previously very long in commerce, and as I mentioned, it literally spelled out every single step of how we recruit, hire, and appoint employees. So rule ten is just our attempt at simplification, but making sure we incorporate the important provisions from the previous rules. So for example, rule number ten now incorporates some of the items from the initial rule, some of the definitions from rule two, and some of the items from rule one that were initially taken out, we've incorporated, incorporated them into rule ten. So rule ten still addresses how we recruit and hire, but in a much more simplified manner. Rule eleven, again, that remains the same. We remind employees what the probationary period is, and what can and cannot happen during the probationary period. Rule twelve was simplified significantly. Previously, it, again, it was one of those rules that just required all sorts of stuffs before, before management can decide to promote somebody. And so, we didn't make any changes to the actual promotion language, but we did clarify what is a voluntary transfer, what's an involuntary transfer, what's a voluntary and involuntary demotion, and to the extent that, that the language caused confusion, we deleted under, was there that would have caused confusion. Rule thirteen, layoff and procedures, we revised it to incorporate, there was a resolution, resolution 2010-20 that existed just on its, by itself in the back of the handbook. We incorporated that into the layoff procedure, and we revised it so that the rule clearly just addresses, in the event of a layoff, how layoffs should proceed. Where do we start, you know, the people with the least seniority, and then work our way up. It also addresses employee rights, defines what seniority is, and it finds how employees are eligible for reemployment. Then rule fourteen, addresses reinstatement and reemployment. So again, we simplified it significantly, took out all the hoops that we had to jump through in order to get to that point, and just drafted a rule that addresses if, if you're a former employee and you leave for a certain amount of time, you're recalled, what happens? If you're gone for longer than that, you're recalled, what happens? So it just tells employees what to expect if they're reinstated after a layoff or, or some other voluntary separation from the, from the district. Any questions?
And we'll go on to section three, compensation and benefits. Rule fifteen, the compensation plan, it was simplified. And the consumer's rights index, the CPI that MSWD will use to determine the rate of inflation, was changed. It used to be the Los Angeles, Anaheim, and Riverside areas, but that is no longer in existence. It has been replaced by the Riverside, San Bernardino, Ontario. So the district uses the urban wage earners and clerical workers in Riverside, San Bernardino, in Ontario, until they changed that to, for now, this is what we're using.
Is that called, please? I'm sure it's in here, but what was it called?
The CPI?
Yeah. Yeah, well, the, yeah, the compensation plan, Riverside, San Bernardino, in Ontario.
Riverside, San Bernardino, yeah, in Ontario.
That's what it's called, okay. The plan, okay, I thought you said it was something else.
Fifteen E.
E. Oh, I haven't looked this way. You mean in here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll find it.
Some unnecessary sections were deleted, such as the part-time and temp employees being paid by a rate established by general manager, that seems obvious. And you need to submit tonsheets, garnishments, and the availability of direct deposits. That is just a process that we use, and we don't have to spell it out on the handbook. Rule sixteen, PEPRA was added to the district's Calpers classification plan. As you all know, PEPRA came into effect in 2013. The last update was 2009, so we just added the PEPRA.
As you know, PEPRA is, you know, was instituted after that.
What, what is it?
After. PEPRA is the new retirement program.
Of Calpers.
All our new employees are in Cal.
It's a new retirement formula, lower than it used to be. Rule seventeen.
For non-classic.
Yeah, we're classic, the older people. And then, anybody that came on board after, do you remember what date?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, you're subject to PEPRA.
Yes. Or anybody that loses their classic status.
For six months.
Is that part of Calpers or a, a completely different plan?
No, it's a Calpers plan.
Rule seventeen, fringe benefits. This rule was updated with resolution 2015-19. That resolution was also at the end of the handbook, so now we incorporated it. The definition of open enrollment period, what a spouse is, what a child is, were removed since that's been abolished, too. And references to COBRA were taken out. COBRA is not a fringe benefit, it's actually mandatory. So we should have to put it in that section. Rule eighteen, training and development. It was revised to incorporate our reimbursement, tuition reimbursement policy, ninety-eight-one, and we removed reference to required training. There was a section that said that if the district sent an employee for training, that the district will cover the cost of training and also pay the employee. Well, that is the law. So we don't need to put that in the handbook. Rule nineteen, travel and expense reimbursement. The policy was simplified. The findings section was removed, and the reference to elected officials or board members were removed. This is what Nancy was alluding to. It used to address board members.
Somers them things when it did.
So we cleaned it out so that now, this is all employee, it doesn't address the board anymore.
Special one, all for us.
Rule twenty, vehicle use policy. There were no changes. We still require employees to have a valid California driver's license, automobile insurance, have driver's training education, and for employees to use seatbelts. No cell phones are allowed. It goes through the expectations of employees who drive the district vehicles, what they are.
But, for example, I, I do not, I'm not, you know, you're not going to be liable for anything that happens when I drive my personal vehicle, anybody does.
Correct. And this rule actually states that if you drive your personal vehicle, the district is not liable.
Even though it's district business, like the earnings change.
But when he does drive a district vehicle, it's, then it's protected.
Rule twenty-one, the vehicle procedures policy, that was also at the back of the book, we moved there right after vehicle use policy. It is, we put the responsibility of driving correctly on the driver. For some reason, they get a ticket, or they are responsible for it. And if they act outside of the course and the scope of assigned duties, they're also liable. It also notifies the employees about the employer pool notice program, which is a DMV program where regularly they send status on employees' driving records. So if somebody gets a ticket or a DUI and they don't tell us, the DMV will inform us. So this basically says, hey, we have this program in effect. And the last section, the fleet administration and the vehicle replacement and the assignment of vehicle sections were removed. It doesn't necessarily spell it out. Again, it was very comprehensive, tie our heads as to how we assign vehicles. This way, management has discretion as to how the vehicles are. Any questions in section three?
Probably during the times of hard economic situations, I probably drove these vehicles a little more than what this policy told me.
Section four, hours of work, holidays, and leave. Rule twenty-two, it spells out the work week. We added that, now we have different schedules for, of course, the field staff and the office staff, and the work week starts four hours into the Friday of the work week. After four hours of the day, start work.
Say that again, do you watch me?
So, so your work week is actually kind of strange. And a work week, we have to define a work week, and we generally put it in a handbook, and that's for employees to calculate, the law says, anyway. That you have to define your work week so employees can calculate overtime, that could potentially be due, right? Because overtime in California is any hour over eight hours a day, or forty hours a week. Well, what's a week? Is a week Monday to Sunday, or is it? So we have to define it. But your schedule is a, was a little bit strange. Your work weeks go, start midday on Friday, and go to eleven fifty-nine AM the following Friday. So it, it kind of made for a difficult overtime calculation. But we figured it out, and we define a work week that works for both employees on a regular schedule and those that are on the flex schedule. So that's really all it was, is we had to put our math caps on to.
And that's common when you have a nine-eighty schedule.
Right.
Isn't when you're alternating Fridays, usually when you have the Friday being split, because sometimes you work it, sometimes you don't. And when you're looking at three Fridays, and you're working two, four hours, zero, four hours, you have to span it that way. So that's typical for a nine-eighty schedule.
I mean, so you use a calendar, you know, twelve oh one, Sunday morning to midnight, Saturday night, like, a week. But yeah, with that, every other Friday off that week. Okay, all right, you just threw me there, the way you said four hours into the work day.
That's because the field starts at six thirty, and office starts at seven thirty. So for field is six thirty, ten thirty, that's when they're scheduled ends. For office, it ends at eleven thirty.
Oh, man.
Well, ours doesn't come until ten, so.
I do.
Is this pretty consistent with other agencies that have some more set up with their flex schedule, and their every other Friday's off, and things like that? Is it pretty consistent?
It's pretty consistent.
So we didn't have to reinvent the wheel when we approached this, right? All right, good, good.
Good questions.
The overtime section was simplified to state that we pay overtime according to California law, or FLSA. The exempt employees section is stating that exempt employees are not eligible for overtime pay unless required by law, was deleted. It's the law, and the district complies with the law, so it's not needed to spell it out. A makeup time section was added to allow employees to flex time during the same work week, with prior approval from supervisor. Makeup time is not eligible for overtime pay unless it exceeds eleven hours in a work day, or forty hours in a work week.
That's good, they should put their makeup on.
Oh, God, yes.
Yeah.
That was weird.
Rule twenty-three, district paid holidays. That was just minor changes. It clarified that holiday hours, which are twenty-seven hours, expire at the end of the calendar year. Those are the next holidays that the board has given employees. And we deleted the mandatory attendance section that is stated that in order to receive holiday pay, employees were required to work the day before and the day after. That was one of the changes addressed earlier. Rule twenty-four, attendance, leaves, reports, and records. It clarified the definition of authorized, which is prior written approval by the supervisor. It also modified some language for absence without notice. Before, it stated that after an employee did not show up to work after a day, the district could terminate them. That's kind of drastic. We have add that to four days without notice. If somebody doesn't show up for four days, now we have the right to start the termination process.
And we used four days because three days is what's required under California law for sick leave. So there's a presumption, if you fire an employee while he or she is on sick leave, even if he or she has not called in, there's a presumption that you discriminate against that person for using their sick leave. So we just made it safe, we did four days, took out the three days that California considers sick leave. And then by the fourth day, if you haven't contacted us, you're gone.
But we still have the fallback provision, if somebody just doesn't show up for a couple of days, and they show up, you know, expecting to go to work, then we can go back for the ones that you fired, get out of here.
Well...
Not for sickness, just for...
Right, if you're no call no...
I just wasn't here.
Of course, and you don't, and you don't communicate with us?
Right.
Then we can terminate you, absolutely.
Rule twenty-five, vacation leave, it was revised to make it more simple. If you're not still on vacation hours, an employee may carry, used to say was not to exceed the prior twenty-four months. Now it says it's not to exceed two times their current annual entitlement. Most of the time ends up being the same, but sometimes when you have an employee that falls between year five and year six, it just makes computing easier. Deleted this section, unused pay, vacation pay, that stated a termination, employees will be paid for unused vacation hours. That's California law, we have to pay out vacation time, so there is no need to spell it out.
What about accumulating these? Is that somewhere else in this thing?
It's in the leave policies, how much they are entitled to accumulate. And one of the things that we noticed when Oriana and I reviewed it, is many of these policies that allow for accumulation of leave, didn't specifically spell out what the maximum cap on leave was.
You don't have a maximum.
Right, and so, and so there were instances in which employees were accumulating on those sick days and time.
That's unfunded liabilities.
Exactly, exactly. So we tried to put a cap in where we could without infringing on employees already accrued benefits, so.
Can you do it for future employees?
We're slowly incorporating that in. And this may not be, I know, has been, Oriana has resisted it for the employee's sake, but... but we are also, we discussed this at some point, need to discuss scaling back some of the benefits that are offered. And I know that's a decision for you all to make, but I'm just putting it up there.
Well, I want it on our plate sometimes so we can discuss it.
Yeah, because you are a very generous employer, and I think that's wonderful. But, you know, also keep in mind, a lot of these things that we are changing, we're changing because of the practical implications of the previous policies. And Danny, Matt, and Oriana were indispensable to me because I could change something because the law has to change it. But they're dealing with these people on a daily basis. So for example, the whole what leave is authorized as opposed to unauthorized, that was a huge issue in drafting this handbook because they had employees who were gaming the system. You know, who were taking advantage, you know, calling the day off and, or the day off before and after a holiday or planning their FNLA doctor's appointments to occur every Friday and Monday. So we had to define what we consider authorized. You know, technically their FNLA is authorized, but we know they're gaming the system. So we had to define it in a way that they could apply it practically and still discipline these employees without violating the law.
Yeah. You didn't delete, it's kind of a tricky area because so many times leave is part of a labor negotiation.
Right, it's legally protected.
So I want to make sure that none of these areas conflict with anything that we've agreed through our labor negotiations.
So far, I'm not aware that they have, but that's our.
I'm sure they will let us know.
I'm sure they will. And that, whatever your collective bargaining agreements are, that would trump this anyway. There's always provision.
And if you'll see, in fact, you're coming up on the sick leave, which is what we're going to come back, thank somebody on the same. But that's an issue where we'll explain what we mean by that. In other words, some of these things that we do, because we have an agreement with existing employees, we can't apply it to the existing employees. But that's what Oriana was saying. When you put these into effect, say, July of this year, then employees after that are going to be held to a different rule than those existing.
Wouldn't that only be if it's still stated in the, whatever you're negotiating?
Yeah.
Okay, exactly, stated in there, right?
Right.
More needs to discuss it.
It does.
And I need figures too, you know, that kind of, I need a lot more than what we're talking about here to make a good decision.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Why can't you make it effective to the existing place?
Well, you probably could.
So what generally happens, Director, is you say we make the handbook, let's say we've already done all this, and we make the handbook effective January 1st, 2020. As of January 1st, 2020, these rules apply. So for example, if the previous rule said you could accumulate 75 days of vacation a year, whatever you accumulated under that rule belongs to you. But as of January 1st, 2020, no longer 75. You can only accumulate 40 vacation days a year. So whatever you accrued, that's yours. You get to keep it, it doesn't affect you. But as of January 1st, 2020, your accrual rate is no longer 75, it's 40.
For everybody.
For everybody.
And with this virus, you know, they just expect worse and worse ones eventually as it goes on. And I think people need to take their sick leave when they're sick. So we need to put that in there somewhere too. I mean, they can't just come and work coughing and sneezing because they don't want to take a sick day anymore.
By the way, while I found a captive audience, if you have an employee who shows up to work visibly sick, acts sick, looks sick, you have the right to tell that employee, go home. If the employee resists, doesn't matter. You have the right to tell that employee, go home. The law doesn't even require you to pay that employee unless he or she still has sick leave to use. However, if you wanted to be nice, you could say, because I'm sending you home, I'll pay you for the day. Come back when you're feeling better, or heaven forbid you have the coronavirus, we'll deal with it later. But you do have the ability to send the employee home without paying.
But we probably would avoid, you know, some of those.
Somebody comes and fixes them at home.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
But they'll all have sick leave. Well.
Well, that's a good, well, that's a good reason they'd want to stay over and have sick leave, otherwise they could come to work and not get the sick leave, correct?
Well, also, on the flip side, you get people that don't take sick days when they shouldn't, not on the health side, but they accumulate all the vacation days they can. Then they accumulate all the sick days they can. They accumulate all their PTO days, and then they retire a year early.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're paying them for a year or six months or whatever, and they're just off doing something else.
Tough on a small district.
Right, and that's why I'm saying at some point, we need that discussion about revising some of that. So for example, sick leave, under California law, you don't have to pay it out, the employee leaves. So we should consider whether that's something that we want to continue doing.
But again, those are all part of, some of those are negotiating issues.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, I'm sure it is. But we don't, we don't have a union per se, but we've always tried to act like we did to getting sure the employees got a fair shake.
And we want to, you know, in order to prevent that, we want to basically show the employees that we will be.
We have a judiciary, you know, mandate for us, for, by, to, you know, to keep the district in financially good shape and not to let those unfunded liabilities get to a point where it becomes very burdensome.
Is there anything, is there anything in the handbook that says rules and provisions as a result of labor negotiations trump what's in the handbook policy?
No, because as Director Wright accurately pointed out, we technically don't have a union. So we don't want to subject ourselves to very burdensome union requirements. So we want to make, as long as we want to maintain that flexibility, we don't want.
You said, whatever labor contract that we enter into with our employees trumps this policy.
It does, it does because.
That's all I'm saying, maybe it should say that somewhere.
Well.
So if they have an understanding of it.
We can consider that. At this point, I'm just wary of putting anything in the handbook that would give the impression that we recognize a union at MSWDA, because we don't, and we don't have one, and we don't want to be burdened with the union rules.
I mean, I think you've been, oh, I think you've been very fair. I mean, about the fact that we have probably, you know, very, very deep. I thought they were, I mean, they're pretty comparable to the other districts. But the other fact is, is that I think the way we want to say is that, you know, yeah, and what these things, be careful not to put us in a legal position where we could lose because we've done something we didn't really need to do. And we do, in fact, probably go overboard a little bit to treat the employees maybe better than they would be treated if they were a union in order to, you know, in order to maintain that relationship.
A lot of unions don't get social security hand benefits, so.
Well, that's an issue.
They do. You know, that's a, that's a, that's a good one for them.
Yeah.
And a reminder how we arrived where we are today is to entice talent to come, we had an issue.
You did, right.
One of the issues that we had in the past is.
We still do now.
And we still do doubt today even with our benefits. And they are, and they're comparable to other agencies.
The only reason we've been able to lure some employees, experienced employees from other agencies, even as far as Pomona or Redlands, is because of our benefits. And that also maintains the union as day. We do not want to get into union negotiations because there's, flexibility is all gone. So to address the vacation leave, there is a cap of two times what the employee is currently earning. So if I'm earning one week a year, it maxes out at two weeks a year. And that's where it cuts.
Sick leave?
No, vacation.
That's vacation.
Yes, we'll go to sick leave next. So rule 26, sick leave. It was revised to incorporate resolution 2015-18 to reflect the new sick leave law. And it added sections for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, or stalking. They may use sick hours for, to take care of these legal issues. Sick leave will be taken in a minimum of 30-minute increments. Previously, it was 15-minute increments. We just corrected the current practice. Employees may accrue up to 600 hours of sick leave. Now, this is where the cash out comes in. We added a second tier, and that is to address directors' rights, concerns about unfunded liability. The second tier limits payout at 50% after 15 consecutive years. So an employee.
15 years?
After 15 years, an employee may cash out 50%. There is a tier, and we can look at this tier. I think 14 is 45%, 13 years is 40. So it cuts the payout in half.
Okay, was that new?
Mm-hmm, yes. Did you want to?
No, no, it's okay.
And that also addresses the thoughts I had about people combining that with vacation time and everything, wanting, wanting to build a early retirement.
Right, currently, employees cannot cash out on optional holidays. They cannot cash out exempt days. They can only cash out vacation, and now the sick leave to 50%. For those new employees, starting whenever we decide.
Whenever you choose.
Currently, the book has July 1.
2020.
No, I thought we updated it to be 2020.
Well, we will.
Is that what you would like?
I don't know, that's what you want.
What, tomorrow?
We need to put this effective at a certain date.
Oh, oh, okay.
And here, like, section E, it has July 1, 2020. Employees have their priority July 1, 2020.
Yeah, so that's my thought. I thought it had been modified to say July 1, 2020.
That's fine.
Now, it can be moved up to tomorrow.
Oh, I don't know what the board wants.
We put it as the fiscal year starting. We could do it as soon as, we just wanted to give that as.
Got it, okay, thank you. So we need to make that decision before we vote on this today.
Vote on it, yes. We choose to vote.
So what do you guys think?
We're not doing a big iron spray between now and July 1st, are we?
No, I can only anticipate one employee starting in the next month.
Yeah.
We aren't arguing.
The budget is only allowed us to do so much.
Well, we didn't.
One employee in what category, at what level?
Field, field staff.
Also a reminder, this is, as this item was brought up today, this has been on the book since 2018. And there was an anticipation of this being adopted prior to July 1, 2019. That's why the July date was, it was just the next consecutive date. I think, maybe Brian had mentioned that, or maybe Arden, General Manager, said that this could be adopted as the resolution date, which is, I believe, this is an active date as well?
Could be so.
Could be, so that's also up to.
We could also put it for the, it could be like an abstract date of when the, prior to the next employee that is hired. I mean, you have to do something like that if you want to include the next employee.
Well, if we wanted to extend the benefit earlier than that date, I would think that we'd have the authority to do that. If we're not taking something away, we're giving, if Arden wanted to be super generous to say, well, realize your benefit doesn't kick in until July, but it's close, it's, it's June 15th, so.
Nothing doesn't kick in, right?
No, it's actually the detriment of the newest staff. They will not be able to cash out after 15 years, which is like way in the future. If they leave before year 10, they get nothing. So after 15 years, they will be able to cash out either 100% or only 50%, depending on the effective date of this rule.
Or we could change that also. We could leave this for the present employees and make it a little stricter for new employees.
That's what this does.
That's, that's exactly what this does. It lowers the unfunded liability starting, and I just need a date from the board.
Okay, okay, well, okay. So you guys want to discuss that now or wait till she gets done? Think about it.
Well, I would like to think of this as a legal document that could be modified or changed as the need arises, I would think. And if there's a special circumstance that we want to look at that is conflicts with this, I would hope that we have the option to adjust or modify any part of it, really.
Of course.
I'd like to hear your idea about the fiscal year.
Sure, sure.
Because if we go back to January 1st, make a retroactive, you might be taking something away from somebody.
We gotta face anything to employees.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
We wanted this done three years ago, so.
But that's what, you're kind of touching on what B was referring to. And it's, you know, yes, we don't have, you know, a union, but we want to respect our agreement with these employees.
That was never an issue. And present employees were never an issue.
Because we treated the employees right.
Exactly.
It was future employees, and we wanted it done before you hired all these people. But it didn't happen, lucky you. So, so, yeah, so future employees. And it's open, everybody knows how I felt throughout the year.
They have to stay here for at least 10 years, and 15 to cash out 100%. So if Brian decides to leave, he's out of luck, he doesn't get any money unless he stays for 15 years.
I got that part, yeah, I get that part.
Okay.
But I talked on an annual basis. It lowers any future.
So it's generally, it's a July 1st start.
2020, got it, thank you.
The new fiscal year, probably better anyway with the budget.
I think he.
That's why we sort of brought that up.
Thank you. Rule 27, family care leave. This was completely replaced with a nice legal version from SDE and P, which is B's attorney, law firm. So it's just completely FNLA requirement per the law. Rule 28, resignation and job abandonment. It was revised to simplify. The resignation language remains the same. The job abandonment language, again, was changed from one day to four days to be similar to the previous. Correct, and with what B said about the sick days. And that is it. Any questions in section four?
No, that's a, that's a good one, that's a good section. That was for most of the unfunded liability ones, anyway.
Well, you're going to get a shot at this again. And so when we go through, if you see something, we're going to be doing this when we do the codifying. So if something comes up, bring it up. We can take anything into consideration any time.
Yeah, I just want to, we just all want to be kept abreast on the unfunded liabilities and when it starts to, you know, to a point where Matt thinks that we need to do something.
Also, it is our goal to bring, to not wait another decade for the employee handbook. It is our goal to bring it once or twice a year, depend as needed as the law has changed. Yes, and that way, next time that we have this sit down, it probably will be 15, 20 minutes as opposed to, you know, so many rules that we ended up changing.
Yeah, that's, CSDA, that's the first thing it tells a new board member 30 years ago. They were telling us that.
We have a committee that meets with some employee representatives every year, talks about benefit changes and stuff. Maybe we should just make the habit of incorporating this into that meeting. Or at the same time, you know, when the board votes on pay raises or whatever.
Yes, I mean, this is before the budget.
Yeah.
Well, but some of the things that you do as a result of that meeting may amend this. If they do, we will, you will have to adopt it accordingly. Is that right?
Most likely, it will come to you for a July implementation and a January implementation. That's when the laws change or the benefits or something else might change. Section five is all the.
All right, so this section, Director Wright, you said section four was fine. For us, section five was just there because section five to us was really the backbone of what the managers need, except that our previous evaluation, discipline, grievance procedures were so cumbersome. I'm not going to go through all the gory details again. But bear in mind that our main purpose in section five was really to draft policies that were, that protected employees' rights that they had legally under the law, but also to give management the flexibility to address discipline and evaluation and grievances in a manner that works for everybody. So I'm going to jump around a little bit, but I think the section that most exemplifies that is rule 31. Rule 31, as I said previously, had all sorts of timelines that led to me just to get to the point where you could discipline somebody. So we simplified it. We kept employees' gallery rights. They have a right to appeal a decision that either demotes them or costs them pay or terminates them. But rather than have to go through these very complex procedures, what we said is, okay, you have a right to appeal if you're demoted, if you're fired. And in the appeal process, we're going to leave it up to the hearing officers at first, the parties get together, decide, select a hearing officer. Once a hearing officer is then selected, then it's up to you, the parties, the hearing officer, to set your own dates. How much notice do you need, manager, in order to get your paperwork together so that we can hold a hearing? How much time do you need, Mr. Employee, in order to respond to what they claim you do wrong or? Let them figure it out themselves, work in their own schedule. That way, you know, Matt or Danny, in the middle of a busy day, doesn't have to stop and say, okay, tomorrow is 10 days from the day that I gave him notice.[1799.32] tomorrow is ten days from the day that I gave them notice. Okay, tomorrow we have to get together and pull all our paperwork. They can work it out amongst themselves and it gives them a lot more flexibility while still respecting the employees' scaly rights. So just to go through now in order, rule, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted, I may be getting ahead of myself, but a discipline under scaly has to come from a second level management.
Right.
And that means you have to stay out of the process so that you have, so that they do have someone to appeal. Whatever the act of example, okay.
Right, so that's all in there. The substance of scaly is all in there, but our own self-imposed torture mechanism that requires, you know, within two days you have to send out this notice and within five days the employee has to receive this paperwork and within six days you have to schedule a hearing.
Yeah.
That's not required by scaly and that made it really hard. Like I said, we, a lot of this is spurred or inspired by the practical experiences of Matt, Danny and Oriana. So I keep using this example because it was such a good one. You know, we had a case where this employee should have been fired the minute we got the drug test. But we couldn't even discipline him. We had to jump through all these hoops just to discipline him. And then after the discipline, then notify that he would be fired, then gave him the appeals. But the steps to get there were so cumbersome.
We had a saying in law enforcement that bad case law was a result of bad police work. And I'm wondering what some of these overly burdensome restrictions, how that came to be was as a result of something inappropriate that happened in the past and we're trying to correct it.
Exactly, somebody somewhere had their scaly rights trampled all over. And so a previous board felt it was necessary to make sure subsequent boards and managers understood, you have to do this, you have to. So we kept those, things that you have to do, we still do. But rather than have, you know, formal memo and a ten-day timeline on that, we just said, once the procedure has started, parties get together, figure out the next steps on your own. As long as the employee has an appeal process, as long as the employee gets a chance to tell somebody above his or her manager, his or her side of the story, and presents evidence to show why does he or she behave that way. So we kept all of those intact.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add, I'm finally going to need to add, you know, the most unpleasant thing that we do is this, and it can be very time consuming.
Oh, it can consume you in time.
But it will be necessary, or we just can't operate efficiently.
No, but it gives you an avenue.
That's right.
It gives you a roadmap of how to get things done. So going along with our theme of flexibility, performance evaluations. Our prior policy required performance evaluations within a certain period of time. And the way it was written, it sort of implied to employees, if you get a positive performance evaluation, you are guaranteed a raise or guaranteed some type of promotion. And that's just not the case, that's not the law. We give you performance evaluations so that we're all on the same page about what we like about your performance and what we think needs to be improved. So we drafted it, we redrafted it so that employees understand, just because you get a positive performance evaluation, that doesn't guarantee a raise, it doesn't guarantee a promotion, and we give our managers more flexibility. It used to be that they had to conduct performance evaluations within a very specific set of type. And they understand that they still should strive to do that for the purpose so that employees are regularly informed of what they need to do. However, if, for example, Danny gets swamped and is unable to finish his performance evaluations within the timeline set, we didn't want that to adversely affect Danny or the employees. So whereas previously, if a, if a performance evaluation wasn't done within a specific period of time, the employee might have lost eligibility for a promotion or might have been denied a raise. So now we make it so that it doesn't count against the employees. And we give the managers a little bit more flexibility on when they can get their.
When the effective date is.
From what I understand, that's really necessary and needed. I know they've all decided, yeah, valuations are. Nobody likes to do.
So disciplinary and appeal, we talked about that earlier. Disciplinary, really no changes. The rule still spells out the reasons disciplinary actions can be imposed. It tells employees what we consider minor disciplinary infractions and it also tells employees what we consider major types of infractions. Major infractions can result in suspension, reduction in pay, demotion, dismissal, et cetera. We did just make some minor changes just to make it more consistent with the next rule, the appeal procedure, because that one we revised drastically. Like I said, we took out all of the time requirements, told, tell employees if you are subject to some type of adverse employment action, you have rights, you have the right to appeal, you have the right to present your side's story, but we'll leave the mechanics of how that's done up to you, your manager, and whatever neutral hearing officer the party selects. And then we just reinforced what we took out from the policies. And again, back to your point, that many of what's in here is probably because something happened in the past that required this particular issue to be addressed. So we beefed up our open door policy so that employees understand, we're not really just stamping all over their rights. We're not taking away their rights. They have, we have an open door policy so they can come to us, discuss any issues we want. And unless they want to file some sort of formal grievance or appeal, then we would like to try and resolve things just through the open door policy, talk to your manager, report it out. Moving along to section six, rule thirty three, we revised, because it hadn't been revised in years and the discrimination laws in California have changed, just a minor of things. For example, now the policy just, it used to be, policies just said, we respect all constitutionally protected rights or all protected categories delineated, delineated in the Constitution. Now, the law doesn't allow that. The law wants you to have in your policy every protected status under the Constitution so that they understand if they fall within any of these protected status and if they feel they're being treated adversely because of one of these status, that's discrimination. So now we have to spell out all the forms of protected statuses spelled out in the Constitution. We also have to now give employees a very detailed spelled out complaint procedure. So we've done that. And we also have to guarantee employees that they will not be retaliated against if they lodge a legitimate complaint. That doesn't change the fact, though, that if an employee lies about discrimination or harassment or lies to an investigator and costs the district a ton of money in having to investigate this thing, that doesn't change the fact that that employee can be up to and put in determination. And I've seen other districts do it and it's tricky, but it can be done as long as you have a policy that specifically spells everything out for you. So that's what we've striven to do with rule thirty three. Rule thirty four, workplace violence, we simplified it. Previously, we spelled out all the different things that we considered workplace violence. Now we've taken all that out. Employees understand what violence is and what not to do at work. Basically, we want employees just to stay calm, put down writing, and if it happens, notify the manager, call nine one one if necessary. Rule thirty five, employee drug and alcohol use policy. So we revised this a number of ways. A, to simplify it, B, to add in what's now required by OSHA, and that is the DOT policy. But we also updated it to address the prevalence of marijuana use because, quite frankly, that's just reality. Problems that Oriana has experienced in the past, we tried to address in the new policy. So for example, an employee who pops a drug test for marijuana may or may not actually be impaired. If he is not subject to the DOT, stricter DOT guidelines, which just says marijuana is marijuana. If you pop it, you pop it, you're out. But if he's not performing a safety sensitive, safety sensitive position, if he's not in a safety sensitive position, he's not otherwise subject to DOT, he may test positive for marijuana, but that could mean that he used the marijuana a week ago and is not necessarily impaired while he's at work. So we revised it again to give the managers a little bit more discretion.
Does doctors' notes or anything like that with marijuana, does that, what happens?
They're, they're trying. Oh, well, with medical marijuana, the doctors, no, it's with medical marijuana. At that point in time, California law said that it didn't matter. Whatever, even if your doctor said you need to be on marijuana for your cataracts, whatever. Marijuana at that time was still not legal recreationally in California. And what the court said was, okay, so you've got a medical excuse for using marijuana. That doesn't undermine the employer's ability to enforce a zero tolerance for drugs and alcohol in a workplace environment. Right, so your doctor could say it's okay for you to use marijuana to fix your cataracts and that's fine while you're at home, but when you show up to work, don't be under the influence of marijuana and don't be impaired. That would be the same with alcohol, it would be the same with prescription drugs. Your doctor gave you a prescription for Percocet because you are on it. Well, that's fine, but don't take it before coming to work if you need, exactly, if you're going to be impaired. So it's the same, just treat it like marijuana. Doctors' note wouldn't change it, it would just be treated just like we would marijuana.
Okay, one more question. What about CBD?
Well, CBD won't show up on a, on a drug test, yeah.
So I asked.
It's just a THC.
Got it, okay, so it was, that one is basically.
Yeah.
So the creams and everything.
Yeah. My dog will be happy because she's got a bad hip and I'm constantly rubbing.
Yeah, it's not worse.
For this, I was just stoning her.
No, not the CBD.
So again, rule thirty six, we have to include that, that's now required by law. And the inclement weather, this was funny, this rule initially, Oriana said, take it out. I don't want employees calling in pretending that there's some inclement weather in Yucca Valley and saying that. But then the same lady, Oriana, then calls me in Westlake and said, the floods. Yes, we do have inclement weather here in the valley.
It snowed in Yucca Valley, like.
Exactly.
Or something like that.
So.
It was not too long ago.
Yeah, so we put it back in, but we, again, just simplified it so that it makes more sense. So we don't talk about, other than the snow in Yucca Valley, we took out, you know, the snow and the tornadoes and the.
And that's easy enough to verify.
Exactly, yeah, just Google. The snowing in Yucca.
Mr. Patrick Evans, was there really snow on the.
Yeah, I don't think they did claim snow and there really wasn't because that's a big deal out here. But you know, it snows in Yucca.
Almost as soon as we took it out, snow.
Exactly, exactly. Normally they call them right back in and we need to put it back in. I have employees asking.
So those are our new rules. We went from a hundred and seventeen pages plus attachments and amendments to about ninety, eighty-seven. So we cut about forty pages.
One question, we kind of joked about it and skipped over, inclement weather.
Yeah.
Let's say it is snowing in Yucca Valley, Danny and a couple of the others can't make it down the hill.
Right.
Is it a free path for them or are they, yeah, fire them? Are they charged a sick day, a vacation day? I mean.
It's not a free day.
It's not a free day?
No.
So what does that mean? So they got to take vacation day or a sick day or something?
In other words, this policy is here so that employees, and again, like I said, this all ties in with, with other policies. So remember, we had that discussion about authorized versus unauthorized.
Right.
Right, and employees suffer certain consequences if there are a number of unauthorized accesses. So one of the reasons we want to put this back in, so that they understand, we recognize that there will be instances in which it's not a day off from work, but you are legitimately unable to come in. And it's, it's an authorized access. But if you're going to take a day off, then you can use your vacation day, you can use an accrued sick day, whatever's good.
Well, work from home, if you're sick, you can work from home.
And just for clarification, what drove that was not having that rule. The roads open, somebody says the road's not open.
Right.
So those that said the road was open, which it was, came to work and those that said it was, they checked for a minute, it was closed at that minute, it reopened.
Right.
I'm going to say minutes after, but it reopened an hour after.
Right.
And what do we do with those? Is that excused and not excused? So that's, again, recency, a lot of times drives what we do here.
Well, we've got the banning path by the scales are sometimes shut down.
Yes.
So, you know, so it's almost stuck in.
If they choose to live, as a gentleman, if they choose to live there, then that's their choice.
Actually, a true statement.
Because you get the opportunity to work from home or something like that.
Yeah.
Again, this is, these are guidelines.
Exactly.
And they're intended to allow us to not overstep but also have some teeth, but then again, not be step by step.
Right, okay.
And, yeah, I have to tell you, I really enjoyed working on this handbook with Oriana and Matt and Danny because they really made the effort to review, painstakingly so, every single policy, word for word. And I can't tell you how many times I met with Oriana, a whole briefcase worth of meetings. But then on top of that, to also then sit down with Matt and Danny, who can tell us from a practical perspective, no, this is not going to work, I had employers do this, and also to tell us, if we keep this in, that's going to make it very difficult for me to be able to address this type of bad behavior in the future. So we took as much as we could into consideration and what you have in front of you is not perfect and it's, I don't think it's even done, I think it's close to being wrapped up. But it really does consider not just what can we do for the employees, but what can we as management do to improve the operations in the district without having to deal with employees who are playing games with their sick days? Without having employees who are, you know, the road's closed, I can't come down. All I have to do is wait until they make it, so that type of thing.
There's no more questions?
I do, back to the one, the introductory period.
Probation, you think it's called probation?
Yeah, the question I had earlier.
Was it under rule sixteen? No, I'm sorry.
Rule eleven.
No, I don't want to know.
Senioritis, yeah, either. I think, I think we covered what I was looking for. If it comes back, let's argue.
You can do it, you can, if you find something, just come to us and we'll put it on the agenda and change it.
No problem.
You don't have to, you don't have to think this is fine. It just gets us a document that we can use right now and then subject to changes as we.
But this handbook, the way it's written now incorporates all the past amendments and modifications and it deletes all those in a sparse space with one book.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So we can get rid of this one and this is the overall, recycle.
This one's the recycle.
And the one with the front cover. So to make it current, we would have to pass a resolution, resolution and then your packet.
Would we have to include the date?
The date is in the document.
The date is already in there. So if you're good with making this effective July first.
As already in the draft document, then we're okay.
Yes, we changed it, so yes, or we kept it or whatever we did. Okay, so I will, if there's no more questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty that's zero six with corrections or changes, I guess is a better word, employee manual rules and regulations.
Effective January one, oh, I'm sorry, July one?
Yeah, that's what I said, with, with changes.
Okay, all right, then I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ladies, thank you gentlemen, for all your hard work and whoever else helped.
I told you, the motion is to, July one is for, there was a sick day?
That's the whole thing.
For the whole thing is what it was? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Is that right? We did, was that the thing or just the sick? Wait a minute, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
No, 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 the resolution was for everything. It was to pass to a separate document.
Yeah, it's just a.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
With the one change.
If in the document, July one, twenty twenty was already in there.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, yeah.
Is that, is that, was that okay then at that, a motion? No, I added that little fix.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the entire document.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for clarifying that.
I didn't want to come back without getting that.
Okay. Thank you all very much, good job.
Does anybody need a break?
Yeah, you know what, let's take a break for a few minutes, because I've got some coffee.
Do we, Dory? I don't know if you're abroad or coffee.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I can't tell you how often I had to work with Skelly. Because I was the one reasoning out the decision.
It wasn't fifty as I thought. Were you frustrated by Skelly having to check another employer's?
No. No, it, you know, it actually...
Be mindful, we're still recording.
Once we got used to how things changed, it worked just fine. I don't want people to think that Skelly is something new, because this was doing almost thirty years ago.
No, it's not, and Skelly is sacred. You can't just bypass Skelly. So, what we've done was just to make it easier for, like I said, to provide the practical experiences. And the one that Oriana and Danny and Matt had with hiring them, you deserve to be hired, but to give them, tell them just being disciplined.
Oh, by the way, get the cardboard boxes, you need to clean out today.
That's your notice.
Actually, you know, when you come back this afternoon, probably, and I can walk through the gas station.
Oriana, I can tell.
Welcome to my life.
She's an expert now.
Quite the hat, man, you should have worn that in DC.
I did argue, I did argue a couple of times.
See, what I did, I did have it for DC, and she said, I want it in DC.
Or, in a couple different ways, to keep my...
I do remember. I thought we prepared, we should have.
V, are you taking off?
Yeah, I'm going to have to.
Well, I just want to step out real quick, I just want to say bye, thank you.
Bye.
Airshake, air shake.
Are you jealous of my elbow five? Elbow five, yes, I want an elbow five.
No, no, I have a forearm, forearm.
Oh, forearm.
Oh, forearm, yeah, forearm.
Do you need me? That's a new one.
No, I can, I can go back and prepare for crap.
But there are all these rumors that we won't be able to get a jury because of the Chinese power.
That's something I won't talk about. Talking about, I guess you're going to do it near...
What she has, not related to the coronavirus, but she is in the middle of all of the coronavirus.
Yeah.
They show up in her department. Well, no, she doesn't, she's got a immunosuppressant disease.
We just taped it up before we put it up on the...
What am I talking about, Tina?
I know, you may not want everybody to know her memory.
Oh, I do tell everybody that.
I just...
It's good news, but thank you. No, it's good news, she's...
Well, I just spent some time with my son, he was in medical school.
I know.
And my daughter, listen.
It was, okay, it was in there last week, and we really, you told me, and so I got your...
Here you go, now, you want to see my daughter, she's also...
Her brain, your daughter is such a brain. That morning when it opened, this was about an hour and a half after...
She's doing P Cam, not one of your, what the hell? And they love her doing this research, because she has such a good mind for physics.
I don't know, but it is something that, you know...
Anyway, I'm getting sick.
They're predicting, reminder why it's just...
That's why I might support it.
All right, I don't know, but eventually, the Matthew, Big...
She also got a National Science... I am not sure.
Are you going to do the Mediterranean?
Michael, I just went all week.
The working... But, yeah, well, eventually, Walmart, Costco, and now Uber, and everything.
Twenty years younger than me, and we celebrate our work, people...
Well, I think this testing, I think we're all going to wait to find out.
Well, it makes me do these kinds of...
Right, right. There are more important things in life, you're right.
As soon as we open the border, I'll tell you what, a couple of my friends went there, by far, they...
So, that's my project for the day, working on that. Yes.
Dory?
It's still recording?
That's recording, and the cameras are still on.
We'll give you a couple of...
Yeah, that was easy.
Good question.
It was, no, it was, I still want to kind of understand the part about the, about the uncollaborative, I don't, I mean, I think you're the formula, but I want to, I want to just... Well, that's, that isn't a uncollaborative, that means you get paid for work you don't, but that's what I thought you wanted by...
Yeah, but they also pitch to me, with you too, yeah, but someday I'd like, even if you need to, whatever, and really understand that, I'm sure it's not part of it, I just never really sat in front of it and figured it out, you know? Oh, that is...
Yeah, because I'm not sure how much it costs, I mean, I'll read it, I haven't read it yet, so I'll read it.
Right.
Well, that's a very good idea. I said, I think with computers nowadays, I don't think that's a problem at all. Yeah, you can think it's like it's there, but it's not, there's a formula, but I don't know how to actually... I know we have, it's two years, maybe, that we owe. If everybody, you know, quit, what? Yeah, well, I'm sure if I was an employee, I'd want the district to stay pretty solvent until I am retired, anyway. So, that's what we're trying to do. Oh, just, I have to, I have to, yeah, I agree with what I said. Oh, it's good, thank you. I know, I didn't, no, I'm sorry about you. Well, that's okay, I know it's hard, because, you know, you haven't done it a lot, so, but pretty soon, you'll just pop in your hand, because I'll make sure. I'll help remind you, but anyway, you will be moving. And another thing, oh, well, I'll talk about this to the directors. I've got one more question for Dory, and I'll let him talk. Okay, is this, have you gone through this, I don't know, I got this stuff, is this, did he give it to you?
You'd go home, you'd step out of there.
Yeah, I believe you can scan it and email it, right? Yeah, yeah, I think it's your company. Okay, but I, so I fill this out, for me, for me, okay. And then I'll read it, and I'll try to see if that would need anything else, but I think turning it in early is probably a good idea, so if anybody requires, they'll know that incoming.
Mark, what, he said Mark?
No, I'm sorry, Mark, but he does have certain benefits.
I'll give it tomorrow or Monday.
Okay, he has excess hours.
So, I just want to make sure that although he's sick, he don't have to do something else.
Technically, he has sick time. He has accrued sick time, he just technically...
I remember that you're being recorded, this is not a private conversation.
Thank you.
So, we'll discuss.
Yeah, well, is that your first one? Sorry, I got mine.
Thank you, Dory.
Everybody likes office laugh, that's why I tried to make it eleven by seventeen, I have no idea why the printer stopped it short like it did. Once I printed it, I'm like, I'm using that.
We could put, we could put lots in our hands, but unfortunately, even though, then it won't... Go ahead.
If you go to the first, the first one sort of lays it out, the first, there you go, that, so you have, our existing building is to the left, our existing building is to the left, so, yeah, it is that property to the beginning of the block. So, yes, now you're looking at a more detailed floor plan of that existing building.
Sorry, I can skip it a little.
No, no. It's not going to be an exam or anything, but I appreciate you looking through the material. No, 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 I didn't even look at it, no, no, no.
All right. We convened this meeting, and the next agenda item is new administration building discussion, update, and discussion.
And, just for women, I'm going to introduce this by saying, I'd be teed this up, I think that's where you put the wall on.
Would you use small words and large reading pictures?
Anyway, I wanted to explain to you today, sort of, the framework for this discussion. At the last workshop, you decided, and not to remodel the building, and I think, as you can see, that's probably a good decision, but to build on this property, on this campus. You directed us to return some architectural renditions, and we had gone over several, and I reviewed them. We have been, however, with the several, the sites that we looked at, have been somewhat constricted, and basically, it doesn't allow us to build a building much larger than what we already have, so that doesn't allow us much room for growth. I don't know how much, but maybe five, 10, 15 more people, but if you, and as you know, you know, we're projected to have a population larger by about 15,000 than BWA, and you all have heard that. So, growth is inevitable, and whatever we build, we're going to have to live with for 100 years, so...
No, I'm not going to have to live...
Well, that's true. So, since that time, there have been some concurrent trends, especially in property values, et cetera, where we've allowed, we've been, we've seen some other opportunities come up, in fact, in a couple of them, maybe, and Brian's going to be explaining that, that give us some more options that may be a little more expensive, maybe the same, but are some things that I would ask that you give me another month or two to come back to you with, research a little more thoroughly, and provide you with the opportunity, because whatever we do, I, I'm not going to live, you know, to be 100 years, you know, old by that time either, but these options will, I think, give you a good, solid understanding of what your decision should consider, okay? And I'm going to, and like I said, I'm going to recommend that you give us another month or two to come back with, you know, additional evaluation. And with that, Brian's going to give you a great history, worked up a nice...
Just a short PowerPoint presentation, trying to, I know we tried to sit with this for two hours, and we've got about 15 minutes, so I'll try to get through these relatively quickly. First of all, you do have a larger size, the board, and that is because there's some drawings in here, and I want to make sure that we're a little bit more clear than come up in the one by seventeen.
So, we're old and we can't see anymore, is that what you're saying?
No, it's a lot more clear, we have, we've seen these before, it's just a little bit more clear.
We did it for you, Randy.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that, actually.
So, just some quick history on this particular building, and where we are in talking about a new administration building. This building was constructed in 1981, so it's roughly 40 years old, is that right? Forty years old?
Yeah, probably.
It's been remodeled multiple times, as most of you well know. We started looking at a new building and actually exceeding the space of this building back in 2006. We had a schematic design completed for the proposed two bunch Palm location for about 40 employees years ago. Because of the economy, that stopped, and because we were still trying to build ourselves back up, the economy was growing more and more successful. We started looking at it again, '16 and '17. What we started to at that point, what would it cost to renovate this particular building, and possibly the annex next door? Looking at the buildings, it was going to cost roughly four, four and a half million dollars to completely renovate these two existing buildings. One note, that cost is not included any temporary facilities, because if we're rehabilitating this facility, we have to move our staff somewhere else, so that was about another 300,000. So, when we looked at that, we said, well, from a square footage perspective, we can build something next door, and that's why the next year, 2018, you know, we hired someone else to say, okay, now let's talk about a new building, and that's exactly what we looked at, and where we are today, actually. We did get direction from the board to move forward with a new building next door for about 20 to 30 employees, estimated cost around four and a half to five million, we budgeted in the budget for 6.5 million, it's in the capital program today, in the past and last year, for a new building. So, that sort of brings up to some of the quick history of where we have been at with this building, and where we're going forward, and where we're at currently. What happened in December of last year, we had another rain event, and created all sorts of issues, and led to some repairs and things of that nature. So, that sort of talked, that sort of reset us, because in that timeframe, two or three years timeframe, some other things have changed, and now we have an opportunity to hit the pause button, if you will, and say, okay, is this really what we want to do with one facility next door? So, what does that facility next door look like? This next page shows roughly 11,459 square foot building next door, administrative building that has 14 parking spaces at the end of this block here. Again, you see in orange, you see the administrative building, that's an existing building here. You have the cell tower in the middle, and then you have the new building with the parking that wraps around. What you see in red is the overhead electric lines, or is a boundary of our building, unless we put that underground, which would increase the project cost. And then, of course, much like we have here, secured parking of roughly 30, secured parking space for the employees.
Okay, so this moved, because this is now on the north, I'm sorry, of the intersection, this is over here.
Yes, yes.
Versus, it was over in that corner at one time.
Initially, when it was just a preliminary, just like, when we were coming to the concept, we did show it there, when it was just our first step, our first part of showing the board, but because of the topography, it costs us more to be able to put it on the south side than it would be on the north side, so there's reasons why it ended up here on the north side.
I think it makes sense to keep it on Second Street, so if people pull up to this building, all of a sudden, they think, or they know it's right there, rather than, you know, a world away.
Having the main entrance on Second Street, don't you think?
Right, keeping it, yeah, right next door, so if you pull up in front of this building, you know, and it's right there, rather than being hidden.
But it's right here, right, that way, right, the main entrance?
No, the front, the back...
Oh, the second street, I mean, yes, okay, second.
Oh, the Second Street. I mean, yes, okay, Second Street, that way.
Yeah, you may have parked back here and came in, but the public.
I got my thing upside down.
So then, of course, the next page, again, a schematic of what that building will look like, the offices, general layout. You see it in boardroom. You see a training area. Again, the public parking is on the right side of the exhibit, the cell phone tower on the left. But again, this is for twenty to thirty employees. It does have some touchdown areas where we can provide a little bit more access to some of our field staff when they're in the office and things of that nature. But this was the general layout at the time, where we are today. And again, this plan, this project is in the budget and we have a consultant that we can move forward and start going right to construction runs, if we so choose. But again, bringing this to you from a pause perspective, I think we'll get into what that means.
Is this what they drew after our last meeting we had, what, a couple of year or two ago? Okay, that's cool. But I think the entrance on Second, just for this particular design, I think the entrance on Second Street is much better than the entrance on October 2nd.
The people showing up to our board meetings, president would come in to this parking lot and they come through this way. So they wouldn't be entering the front door.
Correct, correct. It's better. It's a safer flow in that they would not be coming in a door where it would automatically, we have to set this open and allow the public to come in that parking lot. This would have its own parking area. And it would also be off street for some of the.
And then they would be coming into the front door of the new plant.
Yes, absolutely. That's exactly the way.
And where's the boardroom? Okay.
The boardroom, okay, the boardroom is in the upper right-hand corner.
Okay, so it also is.
Yeah, that is the boardroom. And then you have its own restroom, chenning, of that nature as well.
Public lobby. Okay, yeah, so it's on Second Street too. And, you know, I'm just wondering how, where you put us, right next to the restroom, so, okay.
For me, that's very important.
And the janitor, and a waiting room.
So, yes.
And just interjecting on this layout is when the board gave us, when Brian said, this is our current plan. Our current plan is a building to building on our property. When this was talked about, we did the initial step of doing a, what do you call it?
Need assessment.
Need assessment, place a space planning study for this building and what to remodel. We took those same survey information and applied it here and looked at workflow and talked to those architects. So this has gone through a couple of different iterations. We weren't prepared to bring it to the board, but because of the pause, where we are today is why we wanted to show you. This is a work in progress, but the idea, the concept was, we have a boardroom that can be accessed from the outside that doesn't allow the public to come into our workspace. Because some of our meetings go after hours where our employees are gone for the day. So we don't know what's happening. So that was, so this is, that's that concept behind it. But I don't want to say any more than that because I don't want to still, you know, thunder from.
No, this is, this is from, so no matter what building you've got, this, this, it's going to still incorporate what the, what the space planning had.
Yeah, for some adjacencies and what departments work with what.
Right, right. Both things pretty much what any building would be that we need.
Absolutely. Well, as it relates to this building and the, I would call it the annex or the temporary buildings that the engineering group now reside in, that addresses those needs. It does not address the temporary needs we have down at the corporate yard, the shower. And then it's part of this presentation that we'll get into and why we're sort of here today and what we're talking about. No, but if there's any more questions about that particular exhibit, I'm ready to move to the next.
The dotted lines, are those like half walls or cubicle type?
Absolutely. Yeah, cubicle walls, something that's more temporary. It's not a structure that goes all the way to the ceiling. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm not an architect or an engineer, or I can't even pick out curtains. So I don't know what I'm talking about here, really. But in the green and this peak area down here.
Yes.
There seems to be a lot more open space than there are office space.
So the design was also to allow us to put in future, like a bullpen area sometimes referred to. We did a lot, we visited a lot of other agencies that would put a complete department in a, in a building, in a room. But within that room, there's a bunch of cubicles and that's like their work area. This is, this open space is for flow, but also for future cubicles. We could expand this building, or we could go ahead in the short term, put in additional cubicles. Have this space, it's either ADA and safety.
Okay, okay, perfect. Good answer. Good answer.
For the future, like Arden mentioned, if we're a hundred years down the road, does this building have like a rough employee capacity as far as, you know, could this handle another twenty employees from where we're at now, or?
So I would like to.
Open space.
No, I would like to allow the rest of this conversation. Because there's some, there's some, I won't say strategy, but there's some discussion that talks about our needs and other locations and what we have to consider.
This is just from.
We would be able to double up and put some cubicles in, but it would get a lot, that would be considered temporary. And that, and so when we talk about, I guess easy, what the easy answer is, the parking lot's for thirty employees. So that's what the building is designed to comfortably reside in for long periods of time. Short periods of time, we can move some people in and put cubicles up and then make provisions for that parking. But the way the space is laid out now to comfortably, that doesn't say that.
How many people work in this building right now? Have offices in here? Is that more than, less than thirty, right?
So, yeah.
So this is bigger than what we, it can accommodate a lot more employees.
Yeah, this is about, this building is what, ten thousand square feet?
This, this building is roughly eight to nine thousand in that area. This building currently, what it has is maxed out with twenty, and we say maxed out. We haven't taken up the hallways or the portion of the boardroom to put cubicles up, but.
And there's wasted space upstairs too.
Yeah, so the idea, the premise behind this was, it's hard to figure a five-year horizon or a ten-year horizon. Do we build a shell that can take care of a thirty-year horizon and do improvements to the shell area later? So that's what we were doing when we left the remodel expansion of this building to over to the new building, when we presented before. Right now, it's roughly thirty, that's ten more than where we are today. Your question was, is looking down a hundred years down the road, I don't know if we'll be here, presumably.
Except for Russ.
I don't know. I can't, I'm not, we're not here to say that this is a ten-year program or a twenty-year or thirty-year program. It definitely has room for ten more people.
I do have a question on it because it's hard, looking at this diagram, it's hard because there's no dimensions on it. There's no size of the rooms in center. But that looks like a massive covered patio compared to the rest of the facility. I mean.
So the covered patio area is one of those, today we can use it as a covered patio perugio, a place for our employees to go outside. But also in this design, the concept with the architect, we can build in that area. That's why I want to be cautious. Short term, we can put in some cubicles in our training area, as long as we've got design and things happening for expanding this area. That's, that was, let's take the footprint and then we can expand that area.
It's a good windproof place too, right?
Yeah, it'd be a great place, but I'm looking at how small some of the other workstations are. And it seems like it's disproportionate, covered patio.
Part of what I, I, we put water to, part of what we said, we also need to consider, where do we see growth? For example, I explained very well, I think, most of the time, when I started this business, there wasn't any such thing as a customer or a public outreach person, and I totally agree on this. Now, I think DWA has four people, CBWD has a whole team. You know, you're going to need new people and you need places to put them. And so I haven't really thought this out as much as I should, and I haven't taken much of a look at that and what I expect. So those are the kind of things I'd like to learn more, trying to evaluate.
Well, this is a good idea, just for.
We know it's going to continue to ratchet down and we're going to have to have more water compliance folks on board and things like that. So this building will be in our needs for the first ten years.
Say, for example, we were on one state, that would really double our.
So just further on here, we can take this plan, even if we decide to change locations and pretty much superimpose this on another location.
That's exactly what, yeah, being the schematic of its design and the level of effort we put into this. Yes, if there's no topography issues that would require us to be a smaller footprint, we can take this and put it just about anywhere right now.
And as far as long range, I think that havoc areas, like where you could, if you needed to, make it into more cubicles, more offices, whatever. If you needed, if you need a remodel or an extension, that you save areas and say, well, this will be future, you know, and let the people in the future pay for it, so they can go now.
So that is what we have now from the schematic perspective or layout. So let's, where are we today with this current building, the recent roof and interior damage? We were able, last month, to pass a roof repair action item. And as a matter of fact, I believe we're having a reconstruction meeting tomorrow, maybe tomorrow morning to get the work started. Which leaves us with some other interior repairs. We have several bathrooms that have had some issues. We need those bathrooms desperately, so that, those repairs are going to move forward.
I think insurance might cover that.
I believe we're working with JPA.
Insurance is only covering the bottom.
Okay. So that twenty thousand, half of that will be covered by the JPA, yeah. So, but the seventy thousand dollar number for office reconstruction, drywall painting, things of that nature, if we're moving next door in the next eighteen months, we probably won't, that's where there's an asterisk to that seventy thousand dollars. If we're moving next door, then there's really no reason to move forward. And the reason we say that is because when that people come in, they're professionals that look at commercial property, they say, most people want to come in and, you know, gut down with the studs and rebuild certain things. Why would we put that money in when the next person, the next potential tenant, would tear that right back out? So we looked at that as, yes, it's an inconvenience, but really keeping the water out and having bathroom facilities is what's important. Knowing that we have something to look forward to, we don't think it's going to create a morale issue with our staff.
Well, we want to be sure that the building is safe and.
Are you talking about like the plastic going up there? Just leave it like that and not put the drywall up there?
Yes, that's exactly.
Well, I think you ought to have posters of Arden.
And also, under the, under the presentation you're making here, the idea is to retain this building and lease it or sell it.
We have, we're not quite there yet.
It's kind of what I want to evaluate.
I need to make my presentation a little bit because you guys see into the future so quickly, I can't keep up with the slides. But that's coming, that's coming.
Because it makes a difference on, on that money that we put into the existing facility.
Absolutely, that's what I ask. Okay, and that, so, and that's basically where, so when we hit the pause button and the next slide talks about, okay, what else are we doing in the district? Well, some of the other pending district improvements, we're talking about new shower facilities and the corporate yard, pavement reconditioning of all the asphalt in the corporate yard, office space potentially for the wastewater treatment operator. They're currently using a lab space. We need to, we need to provide neodymic facilities. That cost, some of this has already been budgeted, some of it has not, is between half a million and a million dollars. So when you're talking about thirty employees, we're not talking about the employees that currently reside down at the corporate yard. So you're talking about six and a half million dollars here and a million and up to a million dollars there. We could build everything, we could pull everything together and build one location. So that's sort of where we are. When we looked at everything that's going on, we said, wait, let's, are we going down the right path? We have what we had to, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into a lot of these different options, and we were going down it. But other things have occurred and said, is there an opportunity? And I think that's where we are right now. And that's sort of what the next slide talks about, is what are the other options? Are there other options? We can move forward as we are today and continue to spend money in both locations, but, you know, combining the efforts potentially to corporate. Go ahead.
What, when can you finish?
Okay. Okay, I'll just say, other options, combining efforts at the corporate yard, and we've also heard questions about doing what from Palm Drive frontage. So that was some of the other two things we're going to work.
Okay, for the, for the corporate yard, in a lot of cases for the treatment plant, would we need to build the office space for the wastewater treatment guys? Once we got our new place built, can they like work remotely, operate both from the new facility? Or we're going to need the expansion out there anyway?
So, Dana, maybe you can talk about the new building, the new, or the new plant?
The new plant.
Yeah, the new plant doesn't have. So currently.
Yeah.
Thank you for the pleasure, Dana. So we need to do these improvements?
Correct.
We, today, yes, today we have a, over a year and a half window realistically. And today we are working and dealing with inadvisables at both the yard and the plant. Even when the plant regional location, the West Valley Water Residential Facility is constructed, it will be operated remotely. We're not intending to move out there as it's our home base and not, not this time. It is the future projection that that will be where we report to. And the Horton plant would then be like a satellite, because we're not going to be increasing, but all of our improvements and things will be done to it at the regional location. That may not happen until we start seeing flows, flow projections of about three million gallons per day, which is our next, which triggers our next upgrade to that facility. And that's anywhere, again, crystal ball, that could be on paper, seven to ten years. There could be something that speeds that up, but not now. Put that in perspective, we have two million per of existing wastewater capacity now. The new plant would be another two million, three million he's making reference to, would be when that plant sees a three million increase, we would do expansions at that location. So that is, the next expansion at the new plant that hasn't even gone on construction would provide some office space. That's where we're talking about the seven to ten years.
Yeah, it would, there's office space there now, but it's not, we're not intending to make that location our.
Yeah, that's to take samples.
So Horton will stay your hub for.
Yes, sir.
But sooner or later, probably beyond all of us sitting here.
Until that gets bigger, in other words, for breeding.
Well, it's a one and a half MGD plant, but we're only treating up to about two hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand gallon a day.
Doing most of that at Horton's.
And we're, and we're scalping that flow from the Horton plant, so.
But we are structuring this so that sooner or later, we can send flow up, I think all will go down there if we wanted to. That's well into the future. So at some point, this plant may disappear. It's going to be right in the middle of a residential area. So I, but that's something I don't think any of us here need to worry about, because I think it's down in the future. Maybe when.
Okay, let's, let's get going. I gotta, I gotta get out of here.
But possibly share, we're also the corporate, not just the plant.
Yeah, the paving stuff needs to be done. I was talking about a bit.
Temporary facilities, we have temporary office buildings down there today, so. So the first question we asked yourself, the corporate yard at times is a little bit tight. The question is, could we support, let's say, the twelve thousand square feet building that we have here? If we relocated here, we have enough space, just in a quick drawing of the box, it's about twenty thousand square feet of space, a footprint that we could put a building location at. There's a lot of advantages to this, and I'm not going to get into them at this particular time, but that's over twice the size of the building we're talking about, the building next door, with a possible footprint on that particular site. So what does that mean? That was one of the two options we talked about. We do have enough space in the corporate yard. There are three locations on public websites of having properties for sale, ranging anywhere from two million dollars to four million dollars in various locations along Palm Drive. So there is possible Palm Drive frontage available. So really, the options that we have, where does that put us today? While the current plan is we can continue to move forward, building next door, corporate yard improvements, that's already done, it's already budgeted. However, if we want to look at something else, a larger building, one location, bringing everybody together, where we would have less travel between offices, which would then translate into wage and benefit savings, enhanced communication between office and field staff, training capabilities, all the other things that we talked to you about. If we were to look at the corporate yard, there is another benefit to that, in addition to pulling our resources and building a larger building. We would also then have the ability, if we so choose, is to move out of this facility and actually sell it. We've had a professional come through, they've looked at it, they've evaluated it, anywhere from a million to million and a half.
The way, as is?
Yeah, as is.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, that's, so from that perspective, we could put that money back into our reserves or general fund or what have you, or go towards the price of this building. So that's an opportunity to look at that we hadn't talked about yet in any of our discussions. The Palm Drive option, same exact list of things, positive things about having one location. However, now you're adding two to four million dollars. For everybody's reference, the board members have an updated margin, it actually does say two to four million dollars, not one to two to four. I caught that after the fact. But yes, so the board sees that the property acquisition at this point, unless we could talk to them down and negotiate a better price, would be between, it would add two to four million dollars to the project cost. So instead of seven to seven and a half, which we currently have in our plans and our budget, we'd add two million dollars for the property acquisition. So I think that is where we are right now, and I think what we're looking for now is, and it doesn't have to happen today, but from a staff perspective, I think, are you getting everybody together makes a lot of sense, but that's a change in what we've done and what direction we've seen from the board. And then I think Arden also wants to look at a potential of, is the corporate location where we want to be, or look at Palm Drive. That's a board and policy decision that we could evaluate and bring back to you. I don't think the number is going to change too much than what you see right now because of the negotiated perspective. But I think today, we'd really like to stop working next door, stop Assam and his staff potentially doing some of the upgrades down there, knowing that, hey, we're going to have one building. We have one building, we can consolidate some of our funds.
We also have more property out there that we could possibly sell. What about the twenty acres on Tu�bush? I know it became multi-species habitat, a lot of it did, but is that anything on there? Sell it? We have a well on there though now.
Well, we do, but that isn't going to have to sell everything. And yes, we would, we.
That's what, that's what we bought for.
We are, we do have a list of all of our properties and talked to Danny about it. And we'll, and over the next couple of months, we will take a look at all those properties. We'll look at what we can do as far as shuffling things around by the time we get through selling, you know, not just maybe this campus, but maybe half a dozen other pieces of property. The net, the net difference in moving to another location might be fairly small. And then you need to think, what do you want to do if you're going to actually make the decision? What is in the best interest of the community and in the best interest of?
In my view, in my ideal world, centrally located and easy access to the community to come in and do business with us.
That's what this property is. It's essentially located.
Well, yeah.
So I'm not sure centrally located is the.
But I, but I also.
Somewhere in town, somewhere in the area.
We are sort of right on the edge of residential areas. Sooner or later, people like our access up here, coming and going, it's going to irritate residential areas. We need to think about that in the future. It's not going to stay the same as it is now.
I think this property is limited for your hundred-year plan, where it's something bigger. You know, I like the idea of being combined, but to squeeze into the corporate yard now, it just seems like it's going to get really cramped.
Squeaked.
Really fast.
So why don't we put those things together and let you have some time?
Yeah, good idea.
You know, because this, whatever we do, we're going to live with. Probably everyone here is going to live with it for the rest of their life.
Because we had talked about, as a board, the last time we talked about this, we kind of hoped on doing on this property would save millions of dollars, okay? But we also mentioned to go look at all the property we own and see what else, how much we can accumulate to offset those costs. Because this building and this, is this the appraisal you got, does this include all the property or just the building's property?
No, it's all.
All the property we own right there, okay. So, so a million, a million, million and a half, if we can, you know, accumulate more money from the things that we can sell that we don't need, that would even be better. So, yeah, that was my thought. Okay, so anybody have any more questions on this one?
And just a quick statement, if I may, you did ask for that and we, and staff has put it together. We've put graphics together and tabulated the location of all the properties we own. There is, obviously, we have a lot of property that we use for facilities and there's also some for future.
Right, I don't want to get rid of any of those.
It doesn't amount to a lot, but we'll gladly share that.
Could you print out a map that had, and put the property in colored blocks on there of all the property that we own, so that we can on our own time drive by and take a look and say, gee, would this be a good spot to have the building or?
Done, it's already done. We have that, we definitely will do that.
The next round of this, maybe.
Certainly.
Because I'd like to drive out, you know, I'm talking about some of these and I think I know where they're at, but I'm not exactly sure. And I'd like to be able to drive out there and take a look.
Let me make sure I understood for a second time, the properties that were identified in here as the future properties for the building or the properties that we own?
Properties that we own already.
Okay, because the properties that we own, honestly, there are none that we own that would actually facilitate.
I'm thinking about selling.
Except for this location.
We wouldn't mind selling.
We're working at it, over the yard, that's why the presentation was put together. As far as others outside of those, they're meant for facilities.
So the property we own, we're not considering for moving.
No, the twenty acres, multi-species.
Yeah, I understand, I understand we want self property, that's not my question. So we're not, we're eliminating those from consideration in terms of the new building.
They won't support a footprint of the size that they would require for.
The twenty acres would have, when multi-species came along, it was kind of a whole about one. So, okay. Done with that topic? Okay, so we're going to go into general manager's comments?
Nothing to report.
No, ma'am.
I just got a couple of them. I think, I don't know why the desert sun hasn't picked up our gold medal water situation thing, but maybe we should just, I don't know. And then you can tell us tomorrow if we got something different. I'm just going to throw this out there. Maybe we should take an ad out ourselves and put it in the newspaper, sorry. And of course, this thing was very good, and they picked it up, so I don't know why the desert sun.
I like Russ's.
Yeah, it was interesting to me that they thought news worthy was, let's see, animal Samaritans host old bag's lunch. That was something that.
The rest of this stuff can wait till tomorrow, except for I did print this out. This is what Cal EPA is giving their staff about their building and what's it there. And I'm sure most of it probably doesn't pertain to us and our buildings, but might be some good information about the virus, about the coronavirus. And what Cal EPA just put out yesterday or the day before for their employees.
Thank you. Yes, I'm looking, that's why my instruction to staff is to, you know, get on the phone, find out what other people are doing. So we're consistent with that, because a lot of this is, you know, probably, we're never going to know how much, if everything we did was totally right or wrong, but we are going to have to do what other people do.
We should, yeah, we should really try to get some hand sanitizers or at least go out and buy some and put them in the bathrooms, so.
Actively.
So, I don't want to steal away from Victoria's. Tomorrow she's going to talk about that, the hand sanitizer being discussed in statements, and that comes out of Brian and Victoria's shop. But there's a lot of this discussions from CDC, other agencies.
And our cleaning, cleaning keeper already talked to us.
Yeah, so there's a lot of this to be mentioned. I'd like to partner, I think I'll partner with Victoria on it tomorrow, just to give you, let's, let's everyone know what we're doing. If I may, Madam President, just want to close, there is a piece of property that we could build on, it's not practical. It's actually, for those that don't know, our yard is on the same parcel, there's one parcel that the park is built on. But it wasn't, it didn't seem practical, that's why I didn't say, I mean, we could take our.
How many dollars are they behind?
We could, we could look at that. We acquired that property back when we did, just to go ahead and use as a part.
From a public relations standpoint, that would be a disaster.
And that's why I didn't bring it up, but it was brought up and I didn't want to lose opportunity.
Taking park land away from the community.
Yeah, yeah.
We can go to ours, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anybody back then thought of that plant, it was a five hundred, five million gallon a day plant, is what it was supposed to end up being on that footprint. And I don't think anybody ever thought past that, really, so, no. Anyway, okay, nothing else? Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.